Good evening, we're gonna start the meeting. It's exactly seven o'clock, so I'm gonna start with getting things I need to get done with the board. Would you please check, would you like your papers in digital or paper? Just check, put your name with what you'd like, everybody?
Okay.
And everyone sign in on this one, if you would? Now, does everybody have papers in front of them? Like, for tonight? Everybody?
No.
You know that?
I don't, I can feel embarrassed. I don't see any, I can feel embarrassed for now.
Yes.
And we did share because...
Okay, no big... Yeah. Did you get the papers?
No, there's no copy, no. I've got a bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
That was yours. Did you get one of these packages? No. I've got a bunch of... You have some, I have a few too.
Well, they're online.
Yeah.
Hard to read, online.
Yeah.
Okay, the other thing I want to bring up is when we speak, we need to turn on our microphones and when we're done, we need to turn them off. And part of the reason, most of the reason for that is people complain that they cannot hear us. And the other thing is it's not the system. And that we need to do something to fix this. Try and remember, and we'll try and remind anybody who's not doing that. Thank you. Okay? All right, why don't we start with twenty-three oh six? Is that done right? Twenty-four South of Narrows Lane?
Twenty-three oh five? Twenty-three oh five.
Oh, we have five, I don't have nine.
Well, it is five, there is no six.
There is a five, where does it say?
Yours says six, but our agenda says five, at seven and eight, so you're right, you're fine. There's no six.
All right, all right. So that little confusion. The applicant is Bill Hudson, Lake House Design, Bill's. Is anyone here from that group? Would you like to make a presentation?
Well, I was here a while back.
Yes. Yeah, can I get it?
Yep, I got the microphone.
Just a second, it's hard for us sometimes to hear people, so we're gonna use the microphones.
Last time I was here, we presented our case.
Yeah.
And there was three items that your folks needed clarification. I believe that we've made, moved on to three items. You have all the information.
The three issues that the board needed for the clarification? That's what you're thinking of?
Yeah, I sent a letter on the...
That's in the, in the packet materials.
I think it's...
Yeah. And posted online.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. And everyone had a chance to make a brief?
Yeah. One question, two questions.
Do you want to, did you want to say anything else before we have the board to ask you questions?
No, please.
Oh, go ahead. All right, does anybody have any questions?
Sure, I had a couple of questions, just wanted to make sure you had. I think we had this clarification last time, but I just wanted to double check, if you're not taking the stumps out, you're just taking the trees out?
There's a plan for the trees.
Right. Okay. And then specifically, you had the one tree that was down by the shore, number three? Was that because it was kind of dead? I didn't see that written out specifically, but I thought it was, made sense. Okay, it was in there? Okay. That's all I wanted to double check. Because I said that one really didn't seem to be project based, but since probably got somebody there cutting trees, they're gonna cut it down.
Yeah.
It looked, it looked kind of dead.
Yeah, it's all right.
Okay, it is in the right, okay, thanks. That was my end of it question.
Anyone else?
I, I had a comment, a question. The, I think one of the major issues was the setback for the building to be able to attain the 25-foot height. The new drawings here, and maybe including some adjustment of the footprint as well, but it indicated that the high point of the building is actually at 76 feet back, so that is outside of the 75-foot line. So that, that certainly seemed to satisfy that problem. Another question was regarding the calculation of the 30% expansion, where a small portion of the existing structure is beyond 100 feet, so that doesn't count towards the 30% expansion within the 100, so I noticed that was adjusted, which is fine. The, the only comment, thing I would like to see done on this is the plan of the discussion referred to the directions for the location of the building. For example, the east elevation, which had the, was showing a 25-foot building height. Sound good, and I'm presuming the east elevation is facing the lake. However, there's nothing on this chart to show the direction. So I would like to have compass roads or direction added to that, it can be done, can be done by hand, that would be fine, but that should be added before or to resubmit this to the to the code enforcement officer with the direction marked on it, so whenever we're looking at the, looking at the east elevation, west elevation, and so on, we know exactly where that is. Other than that, I, I think the concerns that we addressed or that we raised have been addressed properly.
Does anybody else have any questions or remarks?
No.
Do you have any questions for us? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
We did it last, did it fill out?
Does, does anyone else out there want to say anything to this plan? They're all for some of you.
That's okay.
You can go ahead and make it. Get sure that...
Everybody good? Okay, I will make a motion in case twenty-three oh dash oh five or oh six, whichever one it is. They're both the same. Consider, consideration for request of Alex and Gene Bullens, Williams, Hudson, Lake House Design, build agent for a conditional use permit for expansion of a single-family resident in the Shoreland Zone, located at 24 Upper Narrows Lane on Town Map 33 Lot 2, be approved. With the only condition that the compass arrow be placed on the map of courses that is the CTO. I'll second that. I'll second that.
All in favor?
This is Jim King, and I say aye.
And Jim is here, I just heard him speak as well.
Oh, Jim, are you, you up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's Jim. I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Favor? Humanus et accessus with the condition.
Thanks. Well, that... You can mark it, it's just called... It's our full name.
All right, it looks like twenty-three oh seven, sound right there? That we got it right, uh, thank you. Okay, do we have anyone here from, let me see, case number twenty-three oh seven, Turkey Lane? Advocate A, Turkey Lane?
I understand, because we're a little bit of a BS engineer, and the plans I used to hear a month ago now, I think, when we presented the first go-around, we had to, we had to address the planning board, so I'll go through those. I will, Glenn Walker, he's the developer for both of these projects that I'm working with. So I'll go through, I basically summarized in a, in a two-page all the comments that we went down through, they were pretty much the same of the both. But number one was, there was an issue with the setback and the 50-foot buffer. We had a turnaround here, we took that out, that buffer is now correct and aligned with ordinance. Number two, the planning board required a summary of the environmental reviews. We included that in there, that was with Lee Berman of Worked Resource Consultants. So you can kind of see all the information that she had put together, pretty thorough depth environmental review of all sites. The third one was the decommissioning costs seem low. I put, I'll just read this because it explains itself, and our intent at estimating the cost of 30 years in the future, based on deducting estimates on dozens of other solar rate projects from the last three years, as well as my 20 years of experience just in a similar environmental destruction industry. In our effort to understand current and future costs, we restocked the level of contractors, understand what costs, and incorporate their opinions into our estimates. In addition, I provided a cost estimate for a recent project on Route 202, which was Fox River Solar. That was for a 2-megawatt system and was $46,000 during the planning board review of that one. We, the same comment came up, so we revised that up to $99,000 and change. This was an accepted amount by the planning board at that time, and was approved. So basically, taking those, the project here is half that size, and just under a megawatt, and we estimated $72,244 at year 30. We used a 2% inflation rate for 20 years. That said, we took that, we looked back at it again, and we upped our, our original cost was 40, was 49,000. And so we upped that to 64,500. So I think we've covered it. Again, it's kind of, the, the fallback on this is that every five years, the DEP requires the developer to revise these cost estimates. And we're willing to share all those with the town every five years too. So there's a checking and balance there to make sure that there is the required money in there to decommission it, so. So that, I think that solves that one. Number four was a viewshed analysis. We did revise that, and did for zero feet, 25 feet impacts. We did, I did have Mount Piska identified on the plans. We did not see a change in their opinion. Did the viewshed analysis, they still said it was a very minimal visual impacts. Number five, drawings have been updated, running through legends. Number six, it was discussed, the meaning of the planning board looking to have me in permits in hand prior to issue approval. To recall, I had a conversation before I left about having conditional approval of these permits, because those permits are, they've all been accepted, but they're gonna be January, February, at minimum, before they actually get approved. So it said delaying this process and then wait another two months to get back in the year to see the same thing, if that's a conditional approval, and I believe the board was okay with that stance, so I didn't do anything different there. I did provide, seven, provided some literature on, from the US Department of Energy about the concern of leaching toxic materials from steel panels. I attached that, that basically said that there really wasn't an issue there, so we don't, we don't see that as an issue. Number eight, we did, I mean, several phone calls and email attempts. I talked to Don about contacting the fire chief, I never did get in touch, contacted him. And the only thing I can assume is that he's okay with the project. Typically, on these projects, they really care about access, and in the design, we actually have a Knox box, and we, the developer works once the project is complete to, you know, go over that with the fire department, police department, emergency services, so that they have access to the site. So I think that base is covered. But again, we were unable to get in touch with him, or whatever his name, there was a couple of emails and a couple of phone calls. We revised the erosion control teams, added additional steel fence around some of these other next time on the vision, because this is a cycle, and this is a work plan. But in that, in that packet, we did put steel fence around these additional wetlands that were cutting. Number 10 was emergency contacts. We revised that, we added, and made sure in the narrative that both for construction and rate of development, that myself or the developer will be contacted in case emergencies, as well as the contractor, and that will be posted inside it, we made at the site. Number 11 was the plan to receive more information about removal of stumps in open areas. These stumps will be removed, utilizing standard construction equipment. The light will be used in a track excavator. The contractor will also provide the eye and grind stops in place, some choose to do that just because it provides a erosion control material, that's right on sites to them to try to contract that in. In wetland or resource areas, utility mowers shall be used, conducted, the standard brushable equipment, those usually on track machines. No scrubbing and grading will take place in those areas. So those will be the 11 issues that we had, so I guess I'll, I'll open it up to questions.
Does anyone on the board have any questions? Go ahead.
Okay. I will start, I guess, yeah, thank you for addressing those and laying out your responses, I appreciate it, that really made it a lot easier to kind of understand, I said, you know, when I reviewed this on my own, I had some concerns about the removal cost still being, you know, a little bit low, and, and I understand that, you know, right now, solar panels aren't very expensive to dispose of, but you know, our fear and what we discussed is, you know, 20 years from now could be like a fluorescent light bulb, but you've got to go figure out who's gonna take them in there, and fortune to get rid of it. Those kind of concerns are there, but like you said, DEP is gonna reassess that, so maybe that's not a big concern. One thing we discussed last time that we didn't finalize, and it's still troubling me with this project, was, you know, installing panels over a wetland, and I found the memo, it's the guidance of evaluation, you know, I did some readings, so guidance for evaluation of wetland conservation impacts, it's September 1st, 2021. It's a two-page memo, and it talks about, you know, impacts of wetlands. And it does set a limit at 15,000 square feet. So, and then they say, you know, if you go over 15,000 square feet, it's mandatory, you go through the, the, I think it's the wetland mitigation process, where you're actually getting, you're paying to go build wetlands someplace else. And, you know, I understand from your discussion last time, you were gonna install helical augured posts, right? So the auger's gonna, the post is gonna have a helical end on it, you're gonna auger it into the ground, so fairly minimal impact. And then I got to thinking about that, until you go and yank that out of the ground? Right, because I mean, you're gonna be yanking, you're not gonna go cut these off, because it says you have to pull things out up to 24 inches down, so you're gonna have to yank these posts out. So if you're doing that in a wetland, you're actually completely uproot ending, it's almost like rototilling that wetland. So you'd be completely devastating that wetland. So from my perspective, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself. You know, given the DEP clearly cites that these should not be put over wetland over a certain amount of area, because it's gonna impact the wetland. Looking at your projects, you moved away from one wetland, it's just a small piece in the wetland? Could we just remove the panels from the wetland, I'm not even asking for a buffer around the wetland, just say, remove those panels from the actual wetland? So that was my thought, I wanted to bring it up to the board and use the applicant to at least give us some feedback on what the possible impacts to your project would be, is if we remove those. And I know it's an impact, because you have to redesign and rework and that kind of thing, but more of that is, you know, what's your change in output and, and that kind of thing? It didn't seem like it was a huge amount of area, and it seemed like it meets our ordinance, you know, the spirit of our ordinance, with some of the things we labeled, protecting, you know, sediment, protecting the, protecting wetlands, protecting streams, protecting our water bodies. So it seems very flexible in our ordinance, that I could do that well within the bounds of the planning board. But again, that's just my opinion, so before I, I, I think I have like one or two other little things, but I, I'm not that concerned about them. I really appreciated your viewshed analysis. I really want to thank you for your work, because I really thought you laid it out well, and it made a lot of sense. And it was really easy to follow, so I appreciated all that, but this seemed like a hurdle I wanted to bring up and potentially ask you to respond, and then see how the other board members felt, that's just, you know, my opinion as a board member.
Sure, and I'm not, I'm not familiar with the, with the notice or the, what you...
The memo.
The memo for DEP, but, you know, with any project that involves a wetland, doesn't matter if it's a solar farm, it's a man, it's a building, parking lot, if you, there's certain tiers of wetland impact. And it doesn't matter what it is, it just so happens that we fall into for this project, in that 0 to 15,000 square foot impact range. And so, again, that's just what DEP, but they don't, it doesn't necessarily, because we've done the Turkey Lane, or the Winata Drive project, is almost major, that, of wetland clearing that we're doing. And I mentioned before, we did a project in Holden, where we impacted, I believe it was two and a half, two, two one seven five acres of wetland. The same sort of concept, where they were cleared, stumps were left, and these orders are put in, DEP provided a permit for that, and then issued, so I think there's I don't think, I don't know how to put that, but I don't think there's a case where you can't have over 15,000 square feet, because if that was the case, we'd have a couple of projects that...
No, if you're over 15,000, you have to pay to restore wetlands, that's clearly what the memo says, that is the limited group. Is you're mandated to actually go and do the process, but I'm saying is, the memo itself, regardless of that 15,000, the memo itself clearly indicates that they're saying there is an impact to wetlands, period. Right, it's not over, you know, it's, it's, it's going to impact that wetland. So my point was, as a board member, reading our conditional use application, and what we have in our ordinance is to protect the environment. If you impact it, maybe it's not over that 15,000. But if there's seven other projects all in and around that, that cumulative go over 15,000, well then, then there's clearly an impact, there should be some, some, some DEP process, but no one can follow that if it's all the small projects. So I think they set that limit, is that's going to be a big impact, it's obviously a big project. But I'm just saying that the memo to me clearly states that it is a problem. I don't see that from, as a board member, as a huge impact to your project, to say, take that area out just because it meets our ordinance here in Winthrop, and I'm a board member protecting Winthrop. So I'm not saying whether DEP is right, I'm not saying what that process is. I'm just saying that's my thought on this particular application.
And the other thing, the 15,000 square feet, it's a you know, financially, yes, there's also that limit, actually, Army Corps put that down to 5,000 square feet. But more importantly, the 15,000 square feet, that's the threshold, that if you go above that, you need to do more environmental impact studies to understand, okay, if I am impacting the wetlands, how is that impacted? And, and when you see the information for Turkey Lane, when we were above that, she actually, Lou Berman actually had the rare report, but it was a I'm gonna think of that right off. A function and assessment, a function values assessment. So she actually goes in there, she says, okay, here's the wetlands now. They cut the trees, here's what the functions and values are now, and what are the impacts? So this project here didn't go over that 15,000 square feet.
Right.
So those more in-depth look at wasn't, isn't considered by DEP as an impact that requires mitigation or further review, I guess, so just to kind of put that in context, I mean, I'll let Glenn or someone talk about, you know, resizing or looking at.
Hey, Shane, Greg and me, they're on my attorney, it's Thompson, working with the applicant on all of these projects. I'm, I'm not gonna speak to resizing, but I think to, to directly answer your question, that's the ruling and review of the DEP in terms of the wetland attack, and we're going through that process that Shane was mentioning. So the sole ordinance really doesn't discuss the wetlands, and they could then, the additional use permits, which is one of the things that it does, so it's back to the DEP, and I'm, I'm a planning board, I don't have a good style, and it's frankly frustrating, sometimes, but it's all back to DEP, but we are going through the DEP process, we are meeting this at night, I think I thought, I know what you said, it's 2021?
Yes.
So it talks about checking 301, if it's above 15,000. But I shouldn't mention, anything below that, we are below that. Doesn't require that extra level of attention, and I understand you're, you're trying to say you're trying to check how it's within our order, I think you are going a little bit beyond what you were just clouds, whether it's solar or commercial use, in terms of needing or not needing this.
Yeah, I think, I mean, your, your point is taken, it's not clearly laid out in the solar ordinance, but it's clearly written in our conditional use permit, period. So if the board decides there's an environmental impact, no matter what size it is, it doesn't say DEP anywhere. So we can say, no, we're not gonna approve your project, because there is an impact. And you can't stand there and say there isn't an impact, because I can tell you 100% that there is, that's why DEP set the limits. So I want to be very, no, don't, don't say no.
No, no.
I'm saying, I'm saying there is an impact. It's not what they're considering a substantial impact.
Understood.
Right? For us, it's a judgment call, and our ordinance on page 53 clearly lays out five different bullets that address environmental impacts. So that's our judgment on how we want to interpret that. So I just want to be clear about what I'm quoting, and saying what our town has written in our ordinance.
Thank you. That comment, I just, so what you're suggesting, and I just make sure I'm clear on this, is to remove the paneling in that area? That, that, that's tough, just because of the location of where it is in this project, I mean, the project is pretty tight as it is on this site, because again, when we start these development process, you know, we, we identify sites, we identify interconnection possibilities, and then we hire the environmental scientists to go out to surveys of the sites, and try our best to, you know, avoid any sort of environmental impact, but any sort of development's gonna have an environmental impact. You know, and again, going to your point, you can't say it's not, because anytime we do anything, we're impacting it, so I, I appreciate that. Again, and a lot of times we find these things just in bad spots, if this was off to the side, if this was a place that was easier to avoid, it might be.
um, you know, I, I might, it might be easier to avoid that. And again, Shane and I have done it, and we've developed projects throughout the state. Um, and we've had similar issues with respect to, you know, uh, moving, moving panels, avoiding wetlands, setting, getting setbacks. And again, that's why we send the environmental scientists out, like, so for example, burn pools, they do burn pool analysis. And if there's significant wetlands, if there's significant burn pools, and again, probably preaching to the choir here, we, we stay out of those areas, just because that is a significant impact as opposed to a minor impact. Um, and then just to, as we go through and develop places, it may, it may as a wet state. And then again, it's just, it is what it is, right? So we try to avoid those, sometimes we can, we move forward the best we can. Again, following the DEP guidelines to design the projects around, you know, as best we can to mitigate those impacts. Um, as far as construction techniques, you mentioned the, the screw anchors. Yeah, what we could think about, again, just thinking out loud here, is we could think of it's like using screw anchors as posts, just driven posts in those areas, might be a compromise, if you will. Uh, but to your point about rototilling the wetlands, I don't know, the screw anchors, basically, they'll, they'll auger down a, a hole. And then they'll fill it with stone dust, and then they'll put this, the screw anchor in with the stone dust. And I'm not sure it's, it's, you know, destructive as you, as, as you're thinking when they actually move that, because of the isolation associated with that uh, screw anchor, you know, if that makes sense? It is fairly small, you, you know, again.
Okay, so it's not like a tech post, helical post, where it's got a big wing on it when you're augering it in?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think they basically drive these down. I mean, if you, if you've seen the panels and gang, screw anchors, there's one technique we could look at, you know, doing, um, just driven posts on the tables, which are just small, you know, let's say three by three pieces of galvanized steel or um, which again, has less environmental impact. So and we're, we're cognizant, you know, what we're doing out here, uh, but again, we're trying to, you know, get a project that answers economically. Um, and that's a, that's just a tough spot, so.
Is that because the panels are connected in series along?
Yeah, it has string links, verder links, so you, when you design this, you've got an interconnection point, and then, you know, we've got the string inverters, we've gotta have the strings associated with the inverters match, and I've got this one, it's like twenty-six or twenty-seven panels for an inverter, again, it's just, it's the way it lays out, I think it's really hard when you start cutting sites out. So, I, I, again, I appreciate, you know, your concerns, I, we could go back and look at alternative construction methods, trying to avoid screw anchors in that area. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to voice, you know, I'm one member of the board, there could be others that don't have the same concerns I do, I just that was, that was just something I wanted to bring up and voice, to see if there's a way we could avoid it. It sounds like it would be you possibly could do alternative methods, which I think that would be appreciated. Um, but I think, uh, you know, if there's a way we could just stay out of it, it would be easier, maybe this project doesn't lay out quite so easy to do that.
That's, that's the problem.
Correct.
What diameter did you say of the screw anchor?
I, I, I don't know, you know, again, I, I, they're not very big, I mean, I wanna say they're, you know, six to eight inch. Yeah, and, and again, I, we may not even choose, again, the way they work is we'll design a project. We just did geotech on this site and a one, one outside about a month ago. So we're gonna get our geotech reports back, and the geotech report will sort of dictate screw anchors, driven posts, things like that. Um, to, again, stabilize the panels, make sure they're secure, gentlemen, I'm starting to be worried, was concerned about, you know, are you gonna hit ledge up there, which we might, at which point we can, you know, use rock anchors, um. So, again, we could use driven posts out there and avoid the screw anchors, um, if, if possible, cause the tables on this don't have to be very big. You know, when I say the tables, the, the tables of what they refer to as holding the panels up. So.
Anyone else have any questions?
Well, i- is that how you would remove them in the future? Did you yank them out or? Or I could just screw them back out? Oh, I'm thinking.
Yeah, you, you actually raise a really good point, because when they put the screw anchors in, they, that's actually a very good point, I wasn't thinking it through, obviously. They screw the anchors in, and so I, I, there's another option here, which is just screw them back out, you literally screw them back out.
And you're gonna have stone dust around them.
That's correct. Yeah, so.
They, they should come out without disturbance too much.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, I don't, I don't, I don't really think it's gonna be a huge service, again, anytime you touch anything, I understand. I mean, if I drive my truck in there, I'm gonna do something that's not there now.
Right, yeah.
It's just the balance of, you know, what that looks like. So, but you're right, this, this screw anchors would probably come out. A-again, eh, the other thing would be to cut it and leave them, but again, I'd have to look at the requirements on the decommissioning. I think, I, I think that's a subsurface area that it has to come out. Um, but you're right, we would probably, at first attempt, try to just back the screws out uh, as opposed to yank them out of the, the next pair.
Yes.
Yeah, what can you, C one and C two, how many rows do you have on that draw? Is that C one?
Yeah, this is C one.
How many rows do you have?
How many rows?
Rows.
Fourteen?
Yeah, just drive mine, my C two had fifteen.
I think that's the old one, right?
Was in the pack in the fourth.
That's the original, right?
Why, why it tipped me off, is this one's not down in that row of wetland, this one is. Yeah, this, this is a drainage.
Yeah, so what we did is we took that last row out, if you can see.
Okay, so you eliminated the problem, that, that row eliminated the problem, great.
And it goes back to, you know, a little
Back after that wetland on top. Well, that's, that is, um, that eliminated thirty panels from being deducted, so you're up around a hundred and thirty-six panels, fifty scale. Yeah, what I'm working at is panels around. So what's impacted you around, out of the thirty panels roughly? We've got three point.
And I can just point out
So then, C one, you're real, you eliminated that row.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, you know, we, again, and I, I presented this, uh, during the last meeting, is we started out with a a two-meg system, which is twenty acres. Uh, or five meg, sorry, and then pared that down because of impacts to the environment. So this project started out at, it was twenty acres, then we went down to ten, now we're down to, uh, you know, four acres. So we've really tried, uh, to minimize the environmental impacts as much as we can for this project. What does work?
Anyone in the audience have any questions?
Yeah, my name is Daniel Webb, one seventy-five Turkey Lane, a downstream of this monstrosity. I'm worried about leaching from the system, the DEP may say it's minimal, but minimal is a relative term. How much of this is gonna come down to my property? And what my values can possibly affect my health? I also have a construction fat that I know this property. There are rocks in there. It could be as big as this room, if you're not gonna auger posts through, and you're not gonna drive posts through. Also concerned about future cleanup costs. Because how do I know you guys aren't just gonna dissolve your LLC to collect bankruptcy and walk away? This is a great concern to me. I was just bored, do something about escrowing, some mitigation costs. And being able to update those costs due to inflationary and uh, disposal. Peace as they arise, as things change. And also wondering what you're gonna do about, uh, mitigation of reforestation and weeds and the grow up between those panels, they're gonna be dealt with mechanically or chemically? Which will, if it's chemically, it's gonna run down onto my property? And as you say, this isn't a very good site, so why are we even talking about building on this site?
Anyone else? Would you like to?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, uh, as far as decommissioning, we've gone over that quite a bit, there's a, there's a bond, or maybe, you know, that he had, that the developer has to pay to make sure that there's funds available in the future to, for decommissioning, so, and the DEP requires that too. Um, as far as, uh, you know, maintenance, it's a, it's basically creating a mowable surface that won't be mowed more than twice a year. That's for DEP standards, so we have a metal type of off-rampies. Um, and, uh, I've never seen or, we've never, uh, had anticipated using chemicals to do any kind of um, um, you know, mitigation of weeds, whatnot, get that in control, so. Um, and what, what was, what was the other one? Do you have another concern?
Leaching.
Oh, leaching, as far as, uh, like the panels, you're concerned? Yeah, we, we, in the packet, which you probably can see, we provided, uh, some documentation with, uh, the Department of Energy had that they, these panels don't leach, um, they're medically sealed. So we don't really see that as an issue, they're putting these up across the state and um, like I said in the last meeting, I would think if there was an issue with, uh, leaching panels, DEP would yell over that have an issue with that. Probably can see what we're, we're seeing, so. Yeah, and again, one over there, um, I just wanna say, site selection. Yeah, cause everyone, we've done a fair number of sites, we try and, you know, be conscientious of where we cite these types of projects. Um, this particular site, um, was brought to us, my understanding was, um, Knights of Columbus was going to put a meeting house up here, that was proposed prior to us acquiring this site, is they were gonna put up some sort of a meeting house for partying in. Um, you know, a, a steel structure or a steel wooden structure. Uh, so certainly compared to that, this has a lower impact, um, that did not move forward, or at least my, my understanding that did not move forward, because they couldn't get the marketing requirements of the site needed for their meeting, uh, their meeting facility. Um, and then as far as, you know, my job, I guess, this is still the magic, I'm just putting these projects together. It's interconnecting into the electricals, so that's really what drives our decision-making more than anything is, um, is there available space for the electric lines and or substation that those plants tied to? And so a lot of times we're balancing a lot of things, like you might have a perfect piece of ground for solar, no one sees it. It's, you know, in a great location, the soils are great, everything's great. But there isn't three-phase power with capable substation anywhere near it. Um, so that, that's really what's driving us in that direction, um, is the ability to interconnect to the system. You know, getting all the elements of the development together. So that's, again, why did we choose this site? A, it was brought to us because there was some commercial development proposed for it anyway. It has three phases, my understanding is there's another project up the street from this one, either proposed, permitted, or under construction. Um, and it's same with the other project, that's it, it was brought to us because of three phases, um, the ability to interconnect.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or have anything to say? Someone like to make a proposal?
You have a question?
We're thinking over here.
Oh, I don't mind making a proposal, but I thought he was getting ready to say.
No, no.
Oh, I thought he was, so.
I wasn't, I was just looking to see.
We're all watching you. Dylan, would you like to make?
I'll make a proposal.
Thank you.
I propose, uh, that we approve case twenty-three, due zero seven. Consideration of a request from Acadia Energy LLC, AE Turkey Lane LLC. Aviast Engineering LLC agent for a conditional use permit for installation of a nine hundred and ninety-five kilowatt AC, uh, commercial solar array in the rural zone located at zero Turkey Lane on Town Map four, lot thirty-seven.
Fall in favor?
Somebody's gonna second it.
Oh, I'm saying it. I'll second it.
There you go.
Fall in favor? Pose. One. I believe Jim's still here. Oh, Jim?
Yeah, this is Jim, I'm in favor of the project.
Thanks.
Of approving the application.
You were approached. Apologize, it wasn't unanimous, there was someone opposed? Yes. Oh, my goodness, I'm looking at, thank you, thank you.
Case twenty-three oh eight. Okay, the second's over.
All right, we're now gonna reduce, um, case number twenty-three oh eight, and Winata Drive. Do we have somebody who's standing?
So, uh, during the last meeting, we ran a little bit long, if you remember. And, uh, I think it was a lot, I can present, but it was basically the same project, uh, same size. Uh, dealing with a lot of the same issues, um, and what I did is, we, we basically addressed the only issue that was different was the first one, on Turkey Lane. Um, that was all right. Uh, an issue with the fifty-foot setback, we didn't have that issue with this project, but all the other issues we talked about, um, were exactly the same. Uh, be happy to go over that project again, you had to run down through the same answers, basically, uh, um, for this project, as, uh, I'll take your comments, are we doing medical three?
Do the members of the board want to go over those again? Or do you want a few minutes to just look at it?
Uh, we, the, I think four, I think we're gonna hear the, the I don't mind going over the project again, like, just one.
I'd think they'll, they'll remember you. No?
Well, it's the same question. Um, based on the answers to your first question, I guess the second question is, this project in particular seems much more reasonable to remove the area outside of the weather. Um, to remove those, uh, panels back out of the weather. So, um, that would be, I guess, my, still my thoughts or my voice, mentioned to the board.
Can I make a suggestion on this one? Cause it's a little bit easier on this one. The last, um, project, I'll just, I'm just, I'm gonna um, on the last project here, we had to keep our fifty-foot setbacks from the property lines, and so it really was, there's no there's not really a wetlands here, here, per se, so we could have expanded in that direction, but we had the we have these, we have people on either side. Now, with the, when I drive one, we did the same thing, we kept the setbacks, but there's a lot of area up in here with the setback from the property line that with the setback from the property line that is adjacent to a cul-de-sac and nothing up in here. And so the hard thing, and Glenn didn't, he touched on this a little bit, but all this has gone through some interconnection study with the utility. There's a lot of steps to that. So to change something now is a rather difficult process. So that, that's another issue with, you know, trying to just tell us to wait these panels. It's a little bit easier said than done. So what I would ask is, would the board be lenient on maybe opening up a buffer on either side? So that we can still make up for those panels?
My, my first thought would be absolutely not. I mean, I added the 50 foot buffer when I wrote the ordinance specifically because of the audience, the members that have come in and said, you know, I don't want to see that. And, and that's, that really adds a lot to the viewshed analysis and everything. I think, I, I mean, just again, speaking for myself, I think I would probably just, if nothing else, ask you to do alternative measures when you're installing the posts, just drive posts at most. Because that would at least be a lot less disturbance than trying to deal with the, deal with the loggers and just driving posts. So I did, I, I read the study. I understand the environmental impacts. That's why I had to stay out of the significant wetland. So I know it's not a quote unquote significant wetland, but it still is a fairly large wetland impact and it's quite a bit larger than the other project.
Yeah, just like before, we stayed, this was like a non-significant, we stayed out of that for that reason.
Right.
And trying, we're minimizing the impacts as much as we can. Yeah, but so I think if we do the same thing as the last project, it sounds like.
But I think as long as you're looking at those alternatives and thinking about just driving posts for unsupervised peelable, you know, that's, that's, that's my concern is that impact from removal or the impact from installation being minimized as much as possible. And obviously it's not very hard to drive posts in the weather. Right? So very easy to put in, very easy to take out by comparison to, you know, bedrock.
Yes.
I'd just like to add, I agree with Greg that the wetland bulk projects where, where there are some wetlands impacted that an effort to to use the least invasive support design in a wetland would be highly recommended and hit within my both installation and removal that essentially a driven post preferably if possible and and other than that, proceed with the plan as, as laid out in the design.
Anybody in the audience starting questions?
Greg, my friend has.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you.
Can you, I don't, don't want to go over the old ground that you might have gone over on the, on the last meeting here, but can you walk us through the construction technique that you're going to use or that you would, you would think of when you're going to be impacting the wetland area? I mean, you talked about cutting the air, the vegetation, I'm assuming at Turkey Lane. Are you going to be removing all the hydro soils as well?
No, no. If we do that, we're into a higher tier permit and we're going to have a lot more money in the inland fees. So this is very similar to utility corridor clearing that they do for utility lines and retention lines. But go in there with, there you'll see them on the side of the highway.
Max.
Yeah, with their brush hog and, and they're not, it's an acceptable method by DEP. It does, you know, scrape the, the top of the service, but it's not supposed to disturb the soil. So that's the technique that we use in this area.
And so like, for example, the wetland at Turkey Lane, in response to the gentleman's comments, you said it would be mowed. So what are you proposing? How are you going to manage those areas that are going to be, you know, you have to revegetate the weather?
As far as how it can contain?
From a maintenance gap.
Yeah, it'd be with a mower or it could be like in with either boppers or with a, with a weed whacker sort of.
Anyone else have any questions?
Brian, Mr.? Come on now.
Yes.
Don, you and I talked after the last meeting about this being Winter Freeway Business Park.
Yes.
Bill and I, and Wendy and I. What issues exist here relative to lot utilization within that?
Actually, Wendy is here and Bill wonderful. They have an issue more than I do and I actually talked to them extensively after we talked. So I would let them address that if that's okay.
Well, I think the environmental, I think the concern is, the concern is that there's three lots that are being combined here and the what is lot K, that's what it is. It's I, I J K. And it's K is just making sure that that lot drains the way the plan shows it will not be going towards that infiltration or that the wet pond or the infiltration pond. And the other concern, I think, with the observation or comment that Wendy had made, and I see she's with us tonight, is that this will, as we understand, require combining those plots and putting them up for development would require a method to sub-division. So.
That's something I have to research. I'm not clear on that.
Any other questions?
Wendy does, Wendy does this.
Wendy?
Hi, yeah, just to follow up on that. This is a reported subdivision and it ha, it is under the State of Maine Site Location and Development Act permit. One of those lots is being combined, has been approved. The other two have not. I believe this project can move forward. It's just that in the information that I saw that Don sent regarding state applications, I didn't see anything about amendment to the Site Location and Development Act existing permit or, you know, the subdivision. And maybe this is a question that Glenn could answer because he and I talked about this last spring. So I'm just wondering if you've submitted that to DEP or not. And I'm not suggesting that it would stop the project. Bill has done the phosphorus analysis and the SLODA would require that. But in any event, there's a lot of paperwork over this 39 year history. There isn't existing permit. So that's a, a detail that just should.
So I can address that. The, the permit that both Bill and Wendy are talking about was dated 1996 and it did involve that lot, lots tuning for. And it's hard to tell from that what they were actually doing. There was a tree clearing and it sounded like there was other development there, but it never happened clearly because it's a wooded lot instead of. So you know, anything with that lot in that permit, the DEP almost 20 years later, no, 30 years later, is not going to really recognize. They, they would make anybody else go back and have a repermit, anything that was touching with that. So in that light, I contacted Bob Green and he's, he's the one that's reviewing the permits. He's the one that we initially contacted with DEP. And we said, hey, what's going to be involved in this? And he gave us all these permits. There, there's 15, I mean, permits that have happened over the course of the years as far as redevelopment in and around all these different lots. And so when we submitted the permits that we did, which was a tier two nerve permit, a stormwater PBR, a nerve PBR and a decommission permit. I got that right, Brian? Those four permits and they accepted those. That was our cue that they didn't require any additional permit. But this was brought up in the last meeting. So I said, all right, well, I'm going to do a little more digging here because if there was another permit required, we need to put it in. So I emailed Bob Green and this was after I got this information put in, but Bob said, I explained to him the situation, what we're looking at, and he didn't feel that the, it was another amendment to the site location. So that's where we kind of stand with that one.
Well, you've just referenced that lot K, but not I and J, and they're part of, they never got approval on the site location. And this is a subdivision and it's recorded, the planning board approved those lots as part of a subdivision, but they didn't approve any development on them. And the Site Location Act for this subdivision only approved, you know, the lots that are existing outside of your project plus K, one of the three. So yeah, technically it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it's correct to me and I'm and I'll just have to leave it up to the town as to whether they want to get the answer on that or not. But you do have town records about approval of the of this subdivision, which we worked, Covis and Water District worked hard to help the town get approval for, where for the town having a developed business park. I'm just trying to point out some of the process that might have been lost and some of the requirements that still exist. You have a subdivision reported at the registry with these lots in it. And it was under that site location. So that, that's enough. I don't want to beat it any further. I just thought it was something that you should look into to make sure that you've got everything covered, both at the local and state level. I'm not suggesting that it would alter your plan much.
I'd just like to add to that Wendy had sent a letter regarding this lot 6K and the town of Winthrop, the applicant, most developed 55% of lots, lot 6K. The remaining 45% of the lot was to remain natural condition. So what I did, I just quickly ran some numbers of, of that lot and the panel. We were covering 16% of that lot panels, which is well below that 55%. But then it took a step further. I said, all right, lot 6K, the line is like right here. And so clearly we're cutting trees for that. So I looked at, all right, what's the area of the trees? And the area of trees was 53%. So I think we're in step with what a lot of those requirements were. I'm not sure about local subdivision and how that plays out, but I, I think as far as the state's concerned and the permit that was in place, I think we're in step with what, what the requirements were or are.
Yeah, I, you, you're, what you're going to clear and the development. I'm not suggesting that you're going over anything allowable. It's really being looked at differently now since you're not using the retention pond. And Bill has done the phosphorus analysis for the whole parcel and it has passed. So I'm not suggesting that we need to redesign the project. Saying that it's a, the subdivision will have to be I believe will have to be amended. But that is something I think that Don would be most capable of perhaps researching. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I can certainly do that. I, I know that you may have records to help fill in some gaps that I have. But that is something I can address. And then they would need to back to the planning board for amendment if that was the case.
Yeah, just add, we, we did try to search the registry as well. So it's, Brad imported subdivision plan. I don't think we're able to come up with anything on the way to see, you know, we, we need to do further search. But if the DEP requires a SLODA amendment for whatever reason, we will, we will tackle it. But at this point, we can't fix something that we aren't aware of or don't have. So when the D P, no SLODA, no SLODA amendment needed. And where the law there on the actual subdivision situation for the record, so.
Has to be reported. There has to be a report documented or else the subdivision expired. So.
That, and I, I'll maybe do a dip that it was a high level search to try and find it. I can dig a little bit deeper. I can just, but at this point, we don't know what we have to know, I guess. Or, or there hasn't been any provided to, to show that we need to do an additional subdivision amendment at this point.
No, thank you for taking my comments.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have, I, I'm coming, but I was, yeah. I guess the comment is, I take you all have the letter regarding both this project that I sent.
From you.
Yeah, I just wanted to repeat the three comments I had last, last month. But I also had spoken to Camp U4 D P. There's a lot of reviews on these. And he gave me the permit by rule somewhere, permit by rule erosion control standards that apply to all projects. And I just wanted you to be aware of those. Because my understanding is the board here will be, the town will be approving this without seeing what the DEP is requiring. So that's the case, right? Probably. It says that you won't be able to go through with the project until the town has a copy or.
Well, the, the town has the same road control plan that, that D P has or identity.
Right, what, that's what you used to do.
Yep.
But they don't have what DEP will be required when they the, the, the standards, well, you have a copy of the letter. That's section D from chapter 500. That's from inspection and maintenance. That has.
That's always a risk that the applicant takes that if there's changes of the DEP that they may need to come back. Is that?
Well, no, no, I mean, I, I would think they'd have to come back because they're satisfying the town and then they're satisfying DEP, both independently. And it's just that I just want the town to be aware of some of the additional requirements, one of them being maintaining a lot. Your erosion control plan does not say that there will be a law containing by person during the inspections. Chapter 500 says there will be a law with inspections. I just want the town to be aware that there will be required you maintain a law containing.
Yeah, for sure. And then, and you mean in the PBR?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's likely to be there about a lot of these.
But does town have that?
Does the town have the PBR? No.
No.
But we're, hey, we're happy to.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I just want the town, because I don't, I don't know if DEPs are ever going to come out and do an inspection or even question us. They're not local. The town is local. The code enforcement officer is local. If he doesn't know, or if the town doesn't know that there is a law that is being maintained, then they may not even be aware that they could even ask to see it. Just letting them know, letting them know that there are other things that are associated with this project from a regulatory standpoint. So that's all. And the other thing I have a question for Greg. I reviewed a number of these solar farms and solar arrays and one that Manchester here in Winthrop did. I've never been aware of the concerns for wetlands. Maybe a lot of them have actually been installed in the wetland. But I'm trying to get a handle on the impact from the posts going in and coming out. And as far as I can envision in my mind, collectively, all those posts are going to be still a small total area of square footage. And also they're going in once and they're going to be coming out maybe in 20 or 30 years. So the impact associated with the withdrawal of those posts currently, if I'm wrong, is probably temporary. And not going to be anything that's going to be chronic. So it's, it's not as if you're filling in and eliminating a wetland. It's, you may have resuspension settlement, things like that that will over time settle out and renaturalize, you know, that. So I, I guess I'm just trying to, you know, get a handle on for when I reveal it in other towns in the district. I may start looking at that memo that you're talking about. I may start raising those questions.
Yeah, I mean, it's all a question of where you draw the line on substantial impacts, right? You go.
Yeah, I mean, it's all a question of where you draw the line on substantial impacts, right, you go cut a blade of grass. That butterfly doesn't have something to land on and a bird eats him, I mean, you know, it's that whole, you know, you change a hair on anything and you can have effects. So there's going to be an impact, the question is what's substantial, I think my concern is post-density, you know, how many posts are you actually putting in? Are we, I was thinking of, you know, like a tech post, like a helical post, and if you're putting these things in, you know, four are, two are on each panel. And they're only eight feet apart, and you yank those out, there is a lot of material, because they're big, there's a lot of material. But if they're digging a hole and putting the post, or just pounding the post in, well, the hope is that most of that material would not be stuck to the post. And you wouldn't upend or actually turn over, if you ever turned over a wetland, one of the concerns is you can have anoxic, you will have anoxic conditions. You dump that dirt on top, you've now killed an area of wetland, maybe two, three feet in diameter, everything will die. Because it's completely anoxic, right, nothing can grow there until it receives, rebuilds itself, if you do that on an eight-foot spread. That could be substantial, it's, it's hard to say, but if you just yanked out a three-inch post. That's probably not, you're just gonna leave a hole for the most part, especially in a wet, so. Impact again, just trying to think through the process, that's why I wanted to voice my concerns to the board and everybody at the beginning, because I said, I'm not even sure. What that line would look like, what those environmental impacts, I mean, a wetland is always going to be self-draining unless it's part of a stream, right? So it's not going to be really that much of a threat to disturbing the soil and having that run someplace, unless you have a major rain vent, rain event. You know, wetlands, a lot of times, vernal pools and wetlands are, are self-draining, um, they, they're not part of a stream, if they are, they're usually a stream. So they're very, very, very the headwaters of the street, so substantial rains are always a problem, substantial disturbance is always a problem, where does that line fall? I, I, I'm not sure, you know, I just wanted to voice that concern and bring it to the board, just to say, I thought about this, I read about this a little bit. And said, you know, D P clearly says they set a limit on it, and again, I think about the cumulative effects. If there's another project behind this one, and another one behind that one, and another one behind that one. At what point is there an impact, or does it become significant, I'm not sure where that line is. You know, D P temporarily, they put that line at fifteen thousand, but that was. By project, and did, how, how big of a project did they assume, you know, what if it's a ten megawatt or a hundred megawatt, you know, massive. Uh, facility versus a small facility, where did that number come from, you always kind of question that, so.
I would like, thank you.
At this point, um. I'm not quite sure what to do with this, um, doing, what does this make here? Um, it seems that you, Dawn, it seems that. We're questioning a lot of things about the past, and taking out the future, and the deed, and all those, what, what do you recommend we do?
I, I tried to do as much research as I could on it, there, it's quite extensive, um, files, and, um. The watershed, um, folks here were very helpful to that extent, it would take more time to go back and look in terms of any amendments that might need to come back before this board. Do you think we need to do that?
Um, I'm not, no, I, yeah, I put you on the spot, um, well. What is the board thing?
Uh, I want to make a comment.
I was gonna make a comment, just, I was just gonna say that, I mean, if we put a condition that Mark wasn't gonna issue the building permit. Until we got the deed sorted out with that, whether it had to come back to us or not. So we can give it basically provisional approval, but then as a condition would say. That we work through this subdivision and the lot separation, and if it needs to come back to the board, then it, the approvals were revoked until it comes back to us. Otherwise, if it doesn't need to come back to us and Mark doesn't issue that building permit until it's actually sorted out.
I think that's a good tact, because it, it won't hold them up necessarily while we do the research, you know, waiting to come back, whereas, you know.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's a good approach.
Did you want to say something?
If we could, just, so we're, I didn't want to be, uh, here, I live, right, and if he, wait, Mark, I. So, um, my only concern, and I think that's a great tactic, is how do we make sure that maybe it's working with Dawn, but how do we prove the negative? Which is, so, just not hold it up in four, six weeks, or whatever, however long, anyway, because I, I looked at the deed again. It references the rules from nineteen forty-four, but doesn't reference actually a subdivision plan, it just references the water of the planning board, so, um. That's my only concern is one exactly, what will check the box to, to make sure that, to prove the negative, if there is a negative, I think it's easy if there is a positive, true.
Yeah, that, I'll do that.
Okay.
I'll be looking, because. I'm gonna enforce what it is the board previously approved.
Okay.
So, and I may need your assistance in that, but ultimately, that I can get that information to go away.
Okay, and I, and I appreciate that, but I, I think there's maybe two issues here, one is the state issue with respect to amendment to the slowdown. I don't believe we need to do that, but if we do, we'll agree to file that amendment, right, Jamie?
Yeah, and, and I can pass that information along to, as long as the board, and if there's a question there.
Cause, cause I'm, I'm a little confused, and I think again, there's the subdivision locally, and planning board approval that we can't seem to find, or that is not readily available, use that term.
Yeah.
And then there's, was one of these lots or two of these lots subject to a prior slowdown requiring amendment?
And I don't think we're, if, if D P, which they told us, there is no slowdown amendment, if you, when, when a vision force, D P, uh, I think it's filed amendment. If that makes sense, so, um, and I don't know if, yeah, D P actually, but I didn't.
Yeah, yeah, you have an email, yeah.
So, you're, you're maybe able to, sorry, we checked the box off on the slowdown, and I, and you just addressed the, um. Subdivision aspect, it's even as a condition, but, I'll defer, you, we have, we have that, D P, which is the rule of season slowdown, for a period.
Hey, does anyone want to make a motion on this?
I just want to throw a comment out first.
Sure.
Um, I, I just wanted to comment on this, uh. Industrial Park subdivision situation, um, as. Senior member of the planning board, I guess, might say, for almost twenty years on the board, this subdivision was. Well before my time with the board, but, uh, in the years that I have been on the board, I don't recall that. There's been any new development, um, in this subdivision, uh, during my term, and, um. Barring any legal issues with, uh, proceeding with this project, uh, you know, using lots for this project. Uh, barring any of that, uh, it doesn't appear that these lots are in high demand otherwise for. For other industrial developments, so it would appear that this would not be inappropriate approach to take, thank you.
Be the brave one that puts a stick out. Right?
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody's good, I'm gonna try, okay, I'm going to move the case twenty-three oh eight consideration for request. From Winthrop Lakes Region Chamber, Glenn Warther, and, and, uh. A E, Wentona Drive LLC, A V S Engineer LLC agent. For the conditional induced permit for the installation of a nine hundred ninety-five kilowatt. Commercial solar array in the rural zone located at Wentona Drive on town map. To lots six I, six J, and six K, uh, be approved with the following conditions. Uh, that number one, uh, that we're going to, that the applicant will try to do the least evasive post placement. Um, when doing the site analysis, especially around the wetland area, and number two. That, uh, before the approval is final, that our subdivision permit is reviewed by Dawn. And given back to the applicant as that we have to come back and see it, or that we don't have to necessarily see it. Your, your conditional approval, if Dawn says we don't need to do a amendment, you do not have to come back to us. If you do have to do an amendment, you do have to come back to us.
Very good.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh. So we vote on the favor?
Yeah.
This is Jim.
Jim, yeah.
This is Jim, and I'm in favor.
Thank you, Jim. So, no, oh, okay, so we'll do, do it again, I'm lost. Four, and the girls, okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about Gil's letter, but we lost Gil.
No, I.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we talked about that, oh, that wasn't part of the agenda, I don't think, that was for our information, oh, okay.
When Deb was putting the packets together, I said, can you include this email?
Okay.
So you just would have time in advance to review it, and the way she put on the agenda appeared like it was an agenda item, and it just.
Okay, I, yeah, I didn't take that as an agenda, okay, I, I, I was confused, I know, invited, everybody.
Acknowledging that, that.
Okay, yeah, I was unaware of that, I was, and I, I wanted to, I guess, reading the letters and comments, I mean, the, the points he was making had to do with blast, acknowledging mineral extraction. So, and again, you know, there's, there's lots of, lots of information, I did more reading on this. You know, the two-point-five micron particles that he's talking about, and the concerns, there's definitely health risks, but. It was not very clear, and it's very, very troubling, I really struggled with even the EPA definitions. To try to determine what's in natural, normal atmospheric conditions, I mean, one of the articles I was reading kind of led me to believe that the fires that were in Canada. Impacted our lungs here in Maine a lot more than the dust particles would from a mineral extraction, I was really kind of shocked by that, but that was. Really what it said is that, I mean, the, the smoke actually is a much, much bigger impact. Um, and definitely any small particular matter, no matter what it is, especially if you're at risk, right, you have limited lung capacity of asthma. You're elderly, and you've used, you know, you've got damaged lungs, um, it's going to be a, a more substantial impact to you. So just because of that, but it's really what's in the natural air versus what it is going to be adding. And there is no good measurement that I can find, there's no instrument out there that does a great job. That can really define particles down below ten microns or two and a half microns, it really is a very, very new science, it's really not that different from water quality. You know, where twenty years ago, we couldn't do parts per billion, now we're doing parts per billion, and we're just touching on parts per trillion. Right, the technology is getting better and better and better, but we're not, we're not there yet. So I wanted to emphasize that for the board, that, that, and some of the things he's requesting, there is no science out there that says that you can do this. It's not like you can go hold a meter up and figure this out, it is not that easy, they can't even tell accurately what's actually in the air right now, today, inside. So how are they supposed to do that outside by a mining place?
That's why they don't do it, because they can't.
That's why, tha- they're really struggling to do it, it's a very big challenge, and that's, but the one thing they've proven again and again and again. Water solves everything, you spray water over these machines, that's why they have to have the two thousand eight machines or newer. That have the watering systems that have the ability to contain whatever they're doing, so, I mean, I think that's, that speaks volumes to me, is that, yeah, I mean, when you put water in the air. It's gonna really take out all that particulate, so, um, but, I mean, I, I understand his concerns, and. We do have a mineral extraction, but I know we need to continue to work on that ordinance, because our moratorium is running.
Yeah.
Our time clock is running down, we only have so much more time, but we're, have to have that.
What are they going to do with the water spray, I mean, they haven't defined it, other than we're just gonna have a water spray. Well, there's all, some of the things I've read. They can be designed for what you're producing.
Yeah.
Including the fine parts, but they're not all just one, put a few sprays in there, knock it down.
No, most of the new machine, that's why, it, it, there's a new EPA reg that came out sometime. Sometime in the mid, early two thousands, and that's where they're saying all the machines have to be these two thousand eight or newer machines. That's my understanding from what I've read, because they have these watering systems that contain everything. And it's really, most of this was all OSHA and safe work environment for the workers, this wasn't off-site, this was for the people standing next to the machines. So it was really what the goal was, is they have to have these newer machines, which would want, pu- put enough water out to manage whatever that machine was disturbing. So, I don't, it's, it's sort of like a mystery, but it's gonna be enough to condense and sink. So it's gonna be taking the particulate constantly out of the air and constantly putting it down and getting it ground wet.
So that's where I think we need to emphasize in our ordinance, you just don't go out to. Blows and buy a few spray, you know, it, it needs to be designed for that, and it sounds like they can do that.
And, well, and it's all in the D E P standards, which they adopted from EPA, so I'm kind of like. What are we supposed to do when they're already following EPA and D E P standards, which require these machines and OSHA requirements? Which are much stricter than a lot of the standards, because you actually have workers friendly.
So that's what they have.
So they have to follow those standards, that's not us, so I, I, you know, this to me is. I guess it's not as big of an issue as, as the, the letter would indicate, is that, you know, it's great, it's, it's information. It's a point of view, definitely, there's some research on the two-point-five microns and smaller, not just from rock dust, but from a lot of particles. There's a lot of atmospheric deposition studies, things like that, there's plenty of medical journal studies, I found study after study after study when I was researching this. And I just said, but the challenge is, you know, when you look at from blasting, or even what's in the air. They struggle with it, you know, they talk about methyl mercury and some of those things, yeah, you can definitely, silica dust is one of those things, it's very, very hard to put a pin in. Um, it's just.
So even if they follow the, the D P. The EPA, and they put in these machines that are supposedly supposed to, you know, we don't really know if they.
It's hard to tell, it's really hard to tell, I mean, that's the challenge.
Yeah.
So, I mean, one of the questions, the first question I try to ask, I've done a lot of work with sediment transported rivers. And understanding where it's being transported, how it's being transported, and the particle size distribution. So if you're generating all size particles, right, you're busting up the rock, you're generating all these sizes from rock, you know. Big rocks all the way down to microfine particles, so you're breaking these rocks, generating all these particles, well, what's the distribution? You know, and I've read a couple of articles that kind of sound, I mean, it, it doesn't clearly state it, if I brought, you know, the smoking gun, I would have shared it, if, I did not find it. But it sounds a lot like the visual particles follow the microfine particles, like the distribution is somewhat normal. So if you can't see any dust leaving the facility, the amount of microfine's leaving the facility would be fairly small too. Because if the wind can sustain the dust for X number of feet, it's, it's going to fall out, unless it's going to be truly atmospheric sus- suspended. And that's where you get total, well, that's why you want to know, what's in the air right now, what's down on the football field, what's, you know, what's off the side of the road, what, I, I. They can't say what those things are, which is really the challenge, they can get below ten, but when you get below two-point-five and start to go smaller. You're really in a, into a lab setting, not like a meter that can go measure outside, so when you go, what do you do, capture a volume of air? In a balloon and contain it, how do you capture that without disturbing it, so how do you measure air particulates? They have a lot of meters to do that, and they have accumulation, that's what you put in your house for radon, some of the other types of things that they're sampling for. How do you do that outside, because if the wind blows to ten miles an hour, it's gonna see a lot more air going across than, than if the wind blows at two miles an hour. So accumulation meters don't work outside, because, so there's, there's lots of challenges to this science. So I'm, I'm worried that we would be ahead of what I would think is actually scientifically feasible, you know, if there was something easy, like, oh, they can buy this meter and do this. This is really research-level science still, this is not to practical application, so I just wanted to give you again my two cents on. What I did on looking up this stuff, so don't, you know, it's just, it's just me searching articles, I'm by no means an expert, but. I, I do a lot of research when I have an opportunity, and that's what I found in the science.
So there's no, the people that design and sell, yeah, racism, there really isn't any way they can prove that they work.
They, they can prove to ten microns and twenty-five microns, ultrafine, especially silica dust, is not that. Because they can't define what's in the open air, so how do you define what the machine's generating when you can't, you don't have a control, right? There's no, what's the baseline that you're measuring against, so there's a lot of challenges there, is really what they're saying. At least that's what I found, is that, there was a few papers here and there, but for the most part, it was sort of like, yeah, we're trying to get there, you know, you're looking at PhD scholar. You know, a lot of, a lot of, uh, research university papers, uh, when you're searching through this stuff, and, and it's like. They're knocking off little corners of the science, but like, the big question, no. They're knocking off little corners of the science, but like the big question, nobody's been able to answer is kind of like, okay, what do you do? How do you do this? And it hasn't reached, this is where I'd say the science hasn't reached the applied side of how you actually implement this, how you use this. It's still at the research side, which is something I want to be careful, we don't try to get ahead of something that is not defined yet. It is clearly not defined by EPA, by DEP, by anybody that regulates this stuff, so. You know, we have to be careful to put a science in place that really isn't, I would say, completely vetted yet.
It'd be, it'd be interesting to talk to a. Manufacturer, that manufactures this equipment and ask them how they know. They've probably done it in a lab somewhere or.
It's it's factory, you know.
Which isn't ideal, but it would tell them that, yeah, we're taking them out. Um, I I just want to mention, I I did a little bit of research also. And i- if I. I got on the DEP Bureau website and if I understood correctly. And I might have misread it, but if I understood correctly, they have. Like seven or eight monitoring stations that they were reporting, I thought they were reporting two and a half micron levels. And they were doing ozone as well, but I I disregarded that, but. Uh, I I took a look at. The the readings on the uh, uh, seven or eight stations, whatever it was, across the state of Maine, uh, in. Including one in Augusta at at the DEP somewhere. And I, they were reporting, um. Readings of between. Two and four. Uh. Micrograms per cubic meter, I believe it was. Uh, and really across the state, it was. Relatively consistent, the county seemed to have a little bit of lower numbers than. And uh, uh, central, southern Maine, but by and large, they're all pretty consistent. That, uh, uh, like I say, between two and four, and I think Augusta was three, so. Uh, right about halfway and, uh, the, I guess the current EPA. Uh, limit, which they're talking about maybe reducing, but the current limit, I think, is twelve. They're talking about maybe bringing it down to nine or ten. But. Uh, appears that locally, we're still well, well below that, so.
Right, and I'm sorry, I should have been clear, it, you know, speaking specifically of silica. So they did, they don't do speciation down to two point five microns. So they can't say, okay, well, this is what's in the air and this is actually the breakdown of those particles.
Yeah, no, this was, yeah.
It's total, total particles, so that could be organics, there's gonna be, there's minerals, there's, so they can give you the total, but when you get to that small a sample size. They can't speciate, they can't say what silica does, so that's, no, that's what I was trying to speak to, because that was really what his. His point was, so I should have been clear about that. It wasn't just this particle size, it was. Specifically the type of particles in that particle size.
Right.
So it's a subcategory of that category, so just to be clear, and there is no meter that measures. That can measure silica and separate out the different minerals until you get to the lab setting and you do mass metrobar, you do other things. You can definitely do that in a lab, you can down much, much smaller. But it's, you can't do that with a, with a meter, with a hand meter, at least I couldn't find one or anybody that was even close.
Okay, it's eight thirty, a little over eight thirty, and I think we've actually had a lot of food for thought here. With this last conversation, I mean, we could, we could just go for days. Weeks, and we all could, and I didn't even get in it, so that. You gained it out of there, um, but it's something that we have to think about.
Yeah.
Uh. And put our heads together and come out with something that actually. Is safe to say, because you don't know, and nobody really knows, we really have to think about that. Well, everyone have a.
I was giving, the breederside, six and the twentieth. Next meeting.
I have a forum, the sixth and the twentieth, so yes, that's from those meetings.
The next community six.
And the sixth is the only thing on the agenda, it's going to be, um, working with, um. Joel, he was a sacred, uh, finish reviewing that, and then on the twentieth, I have currently two applications. Um, Island Park Brewery, which is on Route two oh two, they want to put in a new little brewery, and then one thirty-four Main Street, which is with a subway building. And they want to put residential units above that, so those are the two agenda items on the twentieth.
Move your adjourn. Thank you.
Move me adjourned, anybody else agree?
Well, we just. We just moved to adjourn.
Yeah, you go on, you guys go on.
Yeah. Okay, well, I adjourned ten minutes.
Thank you all.
All right.
Do you have those cases that I passed around in the beginning? Did you get them?
I gave them beyond.
Oh, okay.
Are you, do you want them?
I'm gonna start delivering tickets. Yeah. Yeah, so I think that, I didn't realize that Mark is doing that in the past.
Oh, yeah. He's driving to our house.
I didn't know that, so. Oh, yeah, it's been awful for you to not have that, so.
But you didn't know he drove them to our house?
No.
Still in, get your permanent tag.
Yes.
You want to set up planning one on one?
Yeah.
Um.
We'll give you a little.
You can just hand mine to Mark.
Oh, that's right, you guys have neighbors.
Mine's not far, my Greenwood Avenue, Greenwood Lane, so I'm right there.
I like to keep it out and about, so. Look at the ground, I don't worry.
Yeah, I had forgotten.
Dragon made it.
Yeah, I live in a neutral town.
Are you related to Mark?
But I really like to.
Yeah. So I'm right next door, we live next door to them. We went out with you once with your dogs and.
Back at the time, uh. What do your other dog?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
No kidding?
Yeah.
So we have.
I was like, yeah, I gotta, yeah, my wife and and Mark always went out with their dogs. I started dating away, I stayed in, stayed in. Weekly. Okay. We moved Winthrop Street to Gussel for eight years. We were ready for eight years next to Mark, Mark moved in about a couple of years out. Okay. Six, five or six years, and then we moved to Winthrop Street, we still see him as a dog still walk, something like that. Yeah, but then, yeah, four years ago, we moved to Winthrop. Okay. So, yeah.
Yeah.
I was in there yesterday. Him, one or him, I'm sure. Build me some shelves. Good. Yeah, so how long have you been good? Planning more? Question for a year, it was a couple of months, so, yeah.
And you enjoy it?
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Coming in and.
Very cool.
Well, good luck with that.
Yeah, I I mean, I like public service, and my youngest is, you know, finishing up college, so. It's like.
Something aboard by any means.
Yeah, yeah. We just bought the house across the street, we're rehabbing it for my parents.
Yeah, you're probably.
So, yeah, the painter's like finished today and. Um, you know, I didn't, I didn't do electrician plumbing and stuff like that, but I. I had the drywall, I mean, it's given the drywall, everything, I paid everything, just so much.
Nice guy.
But like the electrical stuff, I'm like, no, I'm not hiring an electrician, I stay at work hard, and what they're doing after time, so I'm like, not gonna do it.
Yeah.
So I do all that myself.